Any from the public have any comments or questions?
Thank you. The whole carnival stuff, the carnies that are hired.
Just go ahead and say your name because we have.
Kimberly Brady, okay. Kimberly Brady and the kids, the kids are hating. The parents are like, I ain't spending my money taking my kids there anymore. And carnies, it's just wrong. And the rides suck. And the only thing that's cool is Sundays free. And that's all they're doing. All the kids just going on Sunday and complaining about the rides. And so I think you need a whole new show. Those people wouldn't even give nobody a drink of water when they were setting up. Little kids running around, I need drink water. They wouldn't even, no, can't have nothing. We ain't got nothing, we're setting up, you know. I mean, that's just not what we want in our village.
We have drinking fountains on grounds. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying the kid can get you water, but they have a timeframe to get set up too.
Well, they still could have been a little more friendly with the kids and stuff.
Well, it's worth, yeah, my four-year-old grand love was super shot and he shamed his elder brother and sissies in the ride and they were all too chicken until Graham wore one. He was still on his tippy toes, he was still a couple millimeters too short, but the guy seen how enthusiastic he was.
He got you up to two.
Yeah.
I'm being hesitant on you worrying about that.
Yeah, so anyhow, okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, before we recess till 1:30, let's take up information.
I just have one thing, Chairman. Several of you went to the disaster summit last Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Those of you that didn't, it was a really good forum and I wish Mel was still here because I wanted to publicly compliment her and especially her staff, Bethany Edelman and Kristy Myers. They put together just what I think is a really nice forum to talk about that. I think it's an example of how we could conduct some other public forums when we, when we have topical issues. And I just wanted to thank them. I think they did a great job and good information exchange and good networking.
Could we get them maybe to come in and maybe give them a certificate of appreciation from the board? I think we would recognize them. Yeah, they, it was unbelievable, I thought. And all I can say is if we do have a disaster any time in the future, I think we'll be in pretty good hands because all the agencies are talking together. We've come up with plans on how to respond and react. And I think that guy that came up, the disaster chief from San Francisco.
The budget.
Yeah, he, his presentation particularly in the morning, his breakout in the afternoon was not quite as exciting or stellar, but I think he kind of got sidetracked early on and kind of wandered away from what the main topic was represented to be. But his presentation in the morning was just outstanding. Probably the best presentation of the whole day. You couldn't compare it to that. But it, I thought it was really good, Mr. Chairman, and I think they should be recognized for their efforts.
That's all I have.
I have one question from Mr. Egan, if I could, under your report. In the pass around file, there is a thing, most innovative counties will be honored this C S A after we have the conference in November, but they're also going to be visiting the counties that were selected. And I noticed that Lassen County made the list. We got a challenge award for the under fifty thousand category. There's only, there's only, Lassen and Alprin are only two counties out of, there's eighteen counties total that are getting recognition for achieving. We're being recognized for building a meaningful relationship. And I asked Mel about that and she said it wasn't out of her department. So are you aware, is this?
It's Child.
Child Support Services?
Support Services.
Okay.
Program that they engaged in because it's a federal institution.
Okay, because I was going to say if we could get a presentation of that prior to, to when this comes down, remember it'd be nice to, because they're.
Well, we're, we're planning on, I don't know if it's next meeting or following meeting, we've got the Jedi in the queue.
Because I know, they said the C S A could be coming up here to make a presentation too. So I'd like the C S get it presented before they show up so that when they show up, you know what they're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing more, we're gonna, we'll recess until 1:30 and come back with the capital improvement plan.
Can I ask Chairmore comfortable?
Yeah, I did. He's better. Larry's gonna be a little late. I don't know if the cops got him or something.
Now, that's, that's something I'd leave.
Oh, just teasing.
I know.
So we will, good start here on the capital improvement plan.
Thank you.
Richard, you want to take off on that?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, we brought back the capital improvement plan and Peter Heinberger from Public Works is here to present it. Okay, we're back again. Revised draft, the last one we presented in July. The last one we had had quite a few notes and some various language samples in there for discussion and so forth. But we've done it down, staff has kind of pared it down to the essential stuff, you know, the working framework, we have a plan that we can work with going forward. As we talked about last time, by all means, this is a living document and things can be added to as we go ahead. One of the big things that we did do is set a threshold. We didn't have a threshold last time. We just noted that there was a range that you could have for projects, what a capital project could be. And I think, last time I mentioned, the range I seen was twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. We went with fifty thousand kind of the middle of the road there, which pared down the list of projects we've been working with past previously. So everything that was under the fifty has dropped off as far as a capital project. They would still be covered as a operation or maintenance type project, but since they're, you have set a threshold somewhere. So that'd be a separate list at, at least as far as Public Works projects that would be maintained by our department going forward. So what you have on here is the bigger projects, everything we've been talking about in the past as well. So, that being said, I don't know if there's any specific questions, gentlemen, on this. As I said, we just kind of pared it down to the essential components of a, yes, go ahead.
You were talking about here on your big projects.
Yes.
I was thinking, I looked at those and I think it's on the last page. Yes, you have the South River Field Airport, Wilmer Ave, Runway, Taxi, Hangar, and tie-down area. Is that already accomplished?
Um, you're correct on that. Sorry, that was oversight on my part of putting that in there. Yes, that one is accomplished.
Yeah, and then the other thing that I would like to see out of that there is the Beaver Veterans Memorial Hall up there on, as far as the kitchen goes. The remodel of the kitchen because they got that small kitchen up there that they serve all the senior citizens out of. It's almost inadequate for the service to take the right for the seniors up here. And I'd like to see that one.
And.
And this list as well. I think that's an important point.
On the Beaver bathroom.
Yeah, the kitchen upgrade.
Well, it was on the list for a long, just trying, what happened to it?
I think they just pared it down.
Was it, was it under the fifty thousand? It was on my app, preliminary drawings done, would never have had a number put to it. It probably would be over fifty thousand if we would have sit down and put numbers on it. It's a fairly substantial project to do that remodel there. So I think in past years, going back several years, I think it was just decided that, and that was when Mr. Davis sat in that seat, that let's just kind of pull off the ones that we know are going to be far out there stuff. So that's what we did in here. We can add it back on.
I'd be to paper that. Then we can switch out the airport one for that one. I mean, the south route, it's already done. That's why I'm just.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple of things I wanted to go over. You all, I think, have a copy of this on your desk this morning. This wasn't available until like Friday, or the final draft of the space planning study that Mr. Munyon's done. Pretty much out of, as you know, this has been going on for well over two years and pretty much out of frustration, I finally told Mr. Munyon, get us something that right. Get us, get us a plan that's complete, that we can act upon. And that's what this represents. There is, and this also represents something, concluding our relationship with Mr. Munyon as far as that planning activity. We're not, I'm not real pleased with the interaction we've had and the lack of professional recommendations that we were looking for frankly. We were, what we envisioned, I thought the board envisioned a couple of years ago when they hired Mr. Munyon was to tell him what our needs were and then he would come back and say, okay, here's a recommendation for how we think you might.
No, that's, it gets worse than that because the board, this is not a board meeting. This was something that was driven by Mr. Nichols. So whatever the conversations took place between them, he brought to the board and requested the board to fund, to have this done, but as far as the board's been, we haven't been involved in this at all. And it doesn't reflect, to be honest with you, any of the discussions the board has had in the last, you know, ten years as it relates to it. So as far as a document's concerned, I mean, I read through it, I just shake my head at most of it because it's obvious this guy's talking to somebody other than us.
Well, and I brought this draft back a couple of months ago with, with Mr. Munyon, as you remember. And I was surprised to be met with basically silence in terms of input.
Well, and the reason being is because this has not been a document that's engaged the board. I mean, maybe some staff has had some input with him, but he's been kind of sitting over on, in a vacuum. And the surveys that were conducted with various departments might have some validity, but the board was not included in the survey. And the survey on behalf of the board is filled out by staff who, you know, whether it reflects the board's interaction with departments or not, it's totally in a vacuum. So I think it raises a lot of question as to its credibility.
Well, at any rate, we, we were eight thousand dollars into a ten thousand dollar contract, so I made the decision to go ahead and have it finalized and this is it. It does include several items we've discussed, including the possible acquisition or lease of facility down closer to the courthouse square for, for several facilities, maintaining.
The new courthouse.
The new courthouse. Maintaining the old courthouse as the center for county administration, improving it to an acceptable level for ADA requirements, allowing us to use that second floor for hopefully a boardroom or some other sort of functions. And allows for us to, by and large, move out of this building. But we've discussed in the past it being not very usable and not very easy to bring back and bring into compliance with ADA requirements. Those are the, the significant factors that went into the plan. It's not perfect, but I think it's.
Gives you some information you can work with.
Some information.
So where's that?
With, okay, there are two different documents. And what Peter's talking about is the overall capital improvement.
Yes.
This is, is a planning document for, for space needs as far as organizing the departments in different space than we are now in the most efficient way. Including acquisition of a property down near the courthouse will house those functions that work closely with the courthouse. And if you want, I can, I can go through it a little bit more detail. What we envision is utilizing the second story courtroom in the historic courthouse as a boardroom. Leaving treasure tax collector and those functions in the courthouse, moving the administrative functions and the board supervisors over to that second floor. A key component of that is putting an elevator in that building. And the discussion that we had a couple of months ago was that if we're going to maintain that building as the center of the county government, we need to put an elevator in that building. So at any rate, if we do that, then that opens up the 221 South Route building for planning functions, other functions that are housed in this building to move into that area. And also assuming that we're going to be a public defender, district attorney.
Yeah.
Prohibition and.
Maybe child support.
Child support services down into a bigger facility, possibly the building we refer to as the BLM building, which would likely have enough room to also house the cooperative extension.
You're talking about the BLM building?
Right.
So you're not happy with this document?
I wouldn't say I'm unhappy with it. I was hoping for it a lot sooner and I was hoping for a lot more clear recommendations. But I, I think it's a, it's a fair document that fairly represents the discussions we've had, but they're just going to have been precious little.
As, as a reference document, it probably has some value, but as a planning document, it doesn't. So I mean, it gives information that when you pursue certain questions, you know, it gives you some qualification as to what that question is, but it doesn't give you, I don't think, the planning people should need.
Right, and I frankly think that we are going to just need to do that in-house. The nuts and bolts moving from A to B, I think, we need to do it in-house.
Well, I guess that begs the question, where are you with the BLM building?
I had several discussions with the owner and the representative of the owner. Those discussions initially were that they would like to lease the building. My perspective on that was that, you know, there's significant tenant improvements that we would need to do to that building to make it suitable for our purposes. And it would probably be more economical in the long term to purchase a building and make those improvements if that's what we're going to do rather than, than lease something, particularly with the current market about it, in the market that you're all aware of. So the, the last correspondence I had with the representative was that they are interested in some sort of lease purchase or lease option to purchase. And they've got some prices that probably shouldn't discuss here, but, but we can, we can discuss at the appropriate time. That would likely involve some, at least some borrowing to facilitate that.
So.
But if it's available and they're eager, their tenant, current tenant is leases up in March and they expect them actually to gather sooner than that.
So in this document, does it address which, if we buy that building, which of the, of these buildings would be.
Yeah.
Vacated or sold off or whatever?
Do we lease this building?
No, we own this building.
So we have to.
I think the road department owns this building, don't they?
Um, I think it's actually, it was, county owns it, I think it was purchased, at least partially, with road funds.
I think it was originally purchased with road funds and then they sold off to get the general fund portion back to the general fund event. Could be. Where, where does the road department want to be on that?
They, they very well could fit in that space.
In the Roosevelt building? What are you trying to get out of that one too?
Yeah, and that's a little bit separate, I mean, Mel's not here. But that, Mel's plan, I think, is they can move over on the chest area.
Area.
Yeah, very, very. Another, it's kind of a domino effect, but if Child Support Services moves out of a lease that they're on, which happens to be right next door to where Health and Services facilities are, if they move down to the courthouse, that's about a.
Seven thousand and fourteen.
When they're about, there's a big building there that then would become available.
At a lease?
If that lease is up next June. So there's, there are a lot of.
Do the Child Support family own this building here?
Well, if we're able to secure the building down by the courthouse, they would move into part of that building. That's their desire. They have a strong desire to be near the hall of justice.
And they need a smaller space than this one up here.
They absolutely don't need as much space as that.
No, because I know that when Maria was here, they were basically only using about a half or a third of the space. And when Melody had that flood, that she had to do some relocating, they actually created some functional office space that she shared with Health and Social Services. And at that time is when we all learned that that building was way bigger than what they needed.
If you look at page eight, speaking of this building, supervisor five, we identify three options for the potential use of this, but one, probably the foremost, while we're juggling, page eight.
Sorry.
While we're juggling around the musical chairs, so to speak, we would use this space as an interim location for whenever dark departments are displaced during the tenant improvements. Number two, sale or trade with the city, which I understand it was an option that was discussed with the city at some point. Don't know if that's an interest any longer now.
It may or may not, but I know at one time they talked about them acquiring this building and turning it into the police, basically police headquarters, which would then allow the building that the police are using on Main Street to be turned back in a commercial franchise that could be used for business purposes on Main Street. And because of the garage area and the security area, you know, that, that was what was real attractive to them to consider it. But they may not, I mean, that was probably five city managers ago.
How fast do they go? That's the county's CEOs there.
That was.
We had to put a comparison another time.
That's putting pressure on your right tree. Yeah, that was, that was, that was pre the actual gas, pre potential bankruptcy, pre whatever. But now they've kind of recovered. You know, they've been in the close proximity of the city hall is where they were looking at the reality. But whether that would be what they would want to do now, I mean, that would be worth exploring for Richard because I think they're getting a whole, you know, fresh slate of carnage.
Well, and I think what, if, if this document does something, what it can do is give myself and Public Works direction to move towards the direction of, of the plan we talked about. Getting, securing the building down there, trying to figure out a financing plan to improve the courthouse, the existing courthouse, and come back with, with different phases of this plan. Because this can't happen all of this, it's just.
No, no.
And that, if any, if we can get that out of this document, I guess that will be, will be beneficial and.
Well, it's a good reference document. It's a starting point. Yeah. But we seem like we've been at the starting point for a while.
And that's my biggest frustration with it.
Yeah.
And I know we've put a lot of heat on you about this and I thought you weren't sitting there not doing anything about it. I understand that.
Hey, you've had about two months.
Mm-hmm. No, it's been going on a little.
Well, this, yeah.
I made for him.
Yeah, this has been going on for quite a while.
Yeah.
So, but I do think we see some unique opportunities with that BLM.
So why?
Or, or we weren't aware of a couple of years ago.
We're kind of a, right. You want to talk about that? You want to do.
Twenty-four fifty a square foot, I believe.
What if I, what if I phrase that, you know, somewhere around the, around fifty percent of what it would cost to build.
Throw, throw one other, one other factor in there, if indeed negotiations with these folks on this building. Their, their building isn't the only game in town at that end. You've got, Mr. Carrick's got the big lot up closer to the court that right now isn't being developed, but will be at some point, especially if you have a client that has some financing available. And even then, you know, there's a lot of money involved in that. Don't forget, right across the street from the BLM facility, as you head there on the backside of Safeway, kind of east and south of the tire center is a huge lot that S K UPA owns. And so, you know, maybe the cost of going into retrofitting an existing building may be more than just building a building to suit our needs there. So those, those are other options that you can keep, you know, in the mix so that if install or break down with the owners of the BLM property, they're not the only ones. And then you also have up there, well, of course, that's the old county's site there across the street from where the new tractor supply center is being built, is also a fairly large parcel of ground that right now is not committed to any sort of development. So if you wanted to have something down in the vicinity of courthouse, the new courthouse, that would be there. And if you needed to, on the north side of Main Street, there would just work the Lassen Manor. And we have I don't know how many acres that the county owns and that was originally purchased back in the seventies for the purposes of building a whole new county complex along with the property for Lassen Manor set. So in terms of developing a, an office center, you know, that's property that we already own, so. So there, there are other factors on that end of town beyond just, I mean, obviously it'd be nice if things worked out and we could utilize an existing building like the BLM, but if it becomes an unregional demand because they think they've got a captive market or a captive audience, I think, you know, we do have other options besides.
I, I would agree. I think the current, or my take on the current environment though is that the, the, the cost of existing space has plummeted with the market. The cost of building has not come down accordingly. So you've got this, this dichotomy where it's a lot cheaper to buy existing space than it is to build it, particularly for somebody like the county that has to pay for any wage and so.
Pete, you haven't said anything.
I did, you were just saying.
But you gave your time, John.
Good shot. I'll go with that, good shot.
You don't have so much as Pete's question.
That was good.
I was just going to add though, real quick on.
Oh, like Alex.
Capital projects. What's not reflected in here are like all the road and bridges. Some plans include those, some don't, that I've seen out there as far as the state of California. Those projects are already actually reflected in the transportation, planning, and document stuff. It's something that we can roll in there later, but that, that works out there. I think we're trying to focus on the core stuff, which is some of the space needs and everything like that and those projects. So it'd be, I won't say it's redundant, but it would be a little bit at this time trying to, you know, spend our efforts, rolling those into this when we're trying to focus on some of these other important projects. And that planning work's already been, been done and all that's.
I think that, you know, some of the points, and Peter mentioned this, but it's something worth mentioning. We, we discussed the definition of capital improvement. What is capital improvement? And, and we, not arbitrarily, but, but there's a lot of room for debate on what dollar threshold we put on that. We picked fifty because, you know, in looking at other documents, the range seems to be between twenty-five and a hundred. We think that's a, you know, a reasonable number to think of in terms of, not just a budgetary line item, but a real capital improvement. That certainly can be changed as the subject of a lot of debate. We picked that number not arbitrarily, but there's no magic to it, so we could certainly discuss that.
So are we in the process of replacing these guys? You said you were going to do it in-house. What, what exactly are we?
With the, and we hired Munyon to do the space, just this space. Peter's done the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that, by the way. And he's looked at several others as far as the format and that sort of thing. I don't think that we necessarily need an ongoing relationship with a consultant like TRG. I think, you know, this is a good reference. We can, in the future, maybe two, three, five years from now, we take this and say, okay, things have changed. We've done whatever we've done and then revise ourselves or come up with a new one. I, Peter may disagree with me, but I don't see a lot of value in updating that every year or every period. I, I think it's the longer term.
I agree, yeah, I think we can, I got the framework for that too and you can work on that. And we have the vision, we're trying to go now, just trying to, what you're saying is.
If, if I can interject, you know, I, I've sat here for years listening to all kinds of strategies put forward. We've had numerous plans that have been advanced, but they changed and they come and go depending upon who's in the CEO's chair. The requirement. The requirement for the CAO to do a capital improvement plan is a self-imposed requirement that we create as a county. It's not a state law that mandates that this particular person has to do it. It's in our county code because that was written into the job description back in the 1990s when Phil Bixby, who really was the first functional CAO that we had in place, he was here for over 10 years. And he saw that that was important, but it wasn't a question of creating a document, a booklet that you sit on the shelf and collect more dust. I mean, I've got an office full of reports and plans and, you know, findings and studies and stuff that have been done over the last 40 years. Most of them collect a lot of dust, you know. It has to be incorporated in the budget because nothing is worth anything unless you've got it programmed into budget and you actually implement it through the budget process. I know some people criticize the format that the county has used, but we've had a capital improvement document that's been in place for years. It's called the budget, it's part of the budget. If you go back through all the budget deliberations over the last 15 years, there's a packet that deals with it. I mean, the public works department is charged with that responsibility. So like the sheet that's on, the last couple of sheets here that delineate, you know, projects what we're looking at long term, things that are going to have to be done, whether it's a new roof here, a new bathroom there, whatever it may be, fixing the parking lot at this facility or that facility. And it's kind of try to be smart with your budgeting, looking out ahead to get that programmed in because, and, and they will roll over. I mean, five years is probably, you know, a good time period to kind of reject out. And so what's in the budget this year should be for this year and looking ahead of what our responsibilities and needs are going to be. So when we think we got a lot of money, we really don't because maybe some of that money needs to be set aside to, you know, provide for these needs. And each year as we do the budget, you know, you update that document. So it's not something that's static, that remains in place for a particular period of time. It's constantly changing. It will change in the course, you know, from June or July when we adopt a budget by June of the following year, there's going to be amendments made. We're going to have, emergencies are going to come up. We're going to have a pipe break here or something happened there that needs to be fixed immediately. And we have in the budget, you know, resources set aside to take care of those kind of contingencies and emergencies. And that will affect maybe long term what we need to do. Overlapping the day-to-day stuff, which is really what Pete has to deal with in terms of doing that, you have your broader strategies. And I think that's where Munyon gives us a resource, you know, I think we set, and we have to make that determination. And I think the boards in the past have made the determination that the historic courthouse square should be where we should migrate to and centralize, you know, the services to be rendered. I was a little bit distressed when I saw in one of the earlier drafts of Mr. Munyon's document, basically called for no new building being done at courthouse square and for all practical purposes, we need to migrate away from courthouse square. Well, that was totally contrary to, I think, the, the policies that had been, had been set by previous boards. And that doesn't mean that the board today can't undo everything the boards in the past have done. We want to make that a determination and do that. But I think that could be just done, you know, like gestured by a consultant or by subordinate county staff without having the board involved in the discussion. I find that a little bit offensive because I think when we set a direction, we should, you know, have that respect and honor. Now, I'm reading this revised draft here. I think the message that he got from Mr. Egan, I think, was appropriate. And I think he takes into that consideration that indeed that has been, the long-term goal is revitalizing courthouse square and locating as many of our functions as we can there and utilizing the space we have there. And obviously there are some departments that need to be closed to the court, the new court facility. The state chose to move down there. We didn't move them there. That was a decision they made and it obviously has ramifications upon us. So finding a facility down there to house those departments is going to be key because the ones that are down there are not going to be up here, you know, at courthouse square. Ultimately, then the board made this determination, I'd say probably 20 years ago, that ultimately this building was going to be surplus. That's when the discussion took place with the city as the possibility of them. At that point, they were trying to decide what to do with the police department. And that was before the police department actually moved down on Main Street where they're at now in the old Laston Advocate building. And, you know, the idea of us vacating this premises and being close to City Hall. But now, obviously those strategies probably have changed because there've been a lot of players that have changed in the meantime. But even then, we made the determination that this was not going to be a long-term home of county government. And when the library, that kind of came about because in the early 90s, the library occupied that entire upper floor of the annex building there at courthouse square. And the county got out of the library business in like 1992, 93. And so by 1995, that space was vacated and that was when, you know, the offices that we now see there, the auditor was able to leave the courthouse because where the county clerk is now, that was the auditor's, auditor recorder space. Where the.